I'd like to say goodbye to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Here.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the City Council Committee of the Hole Meeting for March 24th.
Second motion.
I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda and the Arbor Day resolution.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Okay. Two reports. Mayor Roach, you have a report for tonight?
Yes, I do. I'd like to say that we've been working with the final details on the contract to YMCA and with the wording on the insurance coverage, et cetera, and anticipate the vision possibly going next week as a result of a few anticipated iterations. So I appreciate consideration of the resolution. The city's website design is also fully underway by the time, just wanted to give an update for that. And so hopefully we'll be well on our way to getting a new website here in a half or two. We did apply for a $100,000 Chi-Hoga County Demolition Grant, and that was awarded...
Mayor, we're going to need a microphone.
Oh, I think you set EWA up, I'm sorry. So we did apply for a $100,000 Chi-Hoga County Demolition Grant, and that was awarded, was awarded the grant last week. And this will be a great help in improving our neighborhoods. The Hillcrest Council of Councils will be having a breakfast meeting on April 25th, Saturday, at the Hilton Garden Inn, and at 9:00. The topic is Dear Management. There is also a planned election of officers. Slate at the moment is President Patrick A. Ward from Lynnhurst, Vice President M.D. Minco from Highland Heights, Secretary Eloise Henry from Richmond Heights, and Treasurer Patsy Mills from Hayfield Village. So I think it would be great if every, all the council would try to attend that if you're in town. So that's April 25th. We also have completed additional training with Ready Notify and myself, Kim Adams, both the chiefs, will now be able to send out notifications in case of emergency. The Rec Department has also implemented a Delt Sunday Evening Coed Softball League. And the league is comprised of six teams, and they should be starting on May 3rd. I believe, I believe the, they're still looking to finally fill or complete the sixth team. So if anyone's interested in that, we'll try to get some information also on the website. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Chief Newman?
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, members of council, members of the community. Some statistics on our fire department per year-to-date. Our total call volume is at 477. We're averaging about 5.3 calls for service each shift. That's an increase of 1.5% over the same reporting period in 2014. 376 of those calls were emergency medical services, or about 78.8% of total call volume. And our three-area nursing homes account for 23%, or 108% of total call volume. Our fire service calls are at 101, and we've had six structure fires. Simultaneous calls, those are calls that happen at the same time occur about 14% of the time, or 66 events since January 1st. Billing for EMS transports is at $165,000. That's an increase of 9.3% compared to the same reporting period in 2014. We were at $151,000. Revenues for EMS transports are at $70,000. That's a decrease of 21% over the same reporting period in 2014. We were at $89,000. However, that is related to UH transition to the Sanzio Report Writing System. We had to consider catch-up in the last 30 days, and we should be completely caught up in another month. So we're catching up. Year-to-date overtime, we were at $16,573. That's 385 hours. That's a decrease of 51.47%, $17,850 compared to the same reporting period in 2014. Overtime includes our shift coverage and off-duty training related to regional agreements. The total cost of our supplemental staffing year-to-date, that's overtime and part-time, is at $21,022. In the same reporting period in fiscal year 14, we were at $41,481. That's a decrease of 49.32% over last year. Yesterday, we had our Heart Saver CPR course at the Richmond Heights Fire Station. It was a full class. We had 10 residents from Richmond Heights and surrounding communities attend the class, and they were all certified in CPR. Richmond Heights Fire, in partnership with University Hospital Richmond Medical Center, offers the CPR classes on a bimonthly period, free to residents of Richmond Heights. The next class will be in June with a date to be determined. If any of our residents are interested in the CPR class, they can contact me directly at 216-383-6304. Participants must be at least 16 years of age to register. There has been a change to the Residential Code of Ohio regarding smoke detectors. On April 1st, 2015, new language was added to the Residential Code of Ohio, requiring photoelectric smoke alarms. The new language requires at least one photoelectric and one ionization smoke alarm on each level of "new," and that's the key word, "new," one, two, or three family homes. Separate or dual sensor alarms may be used. A smoke alarm located outside of a sleeping area must include photoelectric technology. 90% of homes equipped with smoke detectors today have ionization-type detectors. While ionization alarms are responsive to flaming fires, research shows they are slower to activate during smoldering fires. Photoelectric alarms, on the other hand, are equipped to sound during a smoldering fire. Since statistics show half of all fire deaths are due to smoke inhalation or smoldering, the addition of photoelectric alarms could be the difference between life and death. I know that the building commissioner and I will be working together to revise or to recommend revisions to the current ordinance which has the old language in it.
Madam Chairman, just a question for Chief on this topic. I know you said new construction, new housing. What does that do for apartments? Can we, we get around that by saying that every time a new resident moves into that, new housing for them, that we could have the apartments perhaps revamp and update their smoking period? Is that stretching it a little bit?
If I'm a...
I defer to the building commissioner.
I'm afraid that we cannot, we can't make that law retroactive to anything in the apartments. But there are, I believe that there are things that we can do to our, to our ordinance to build into future years, a gradual changeover to the new codes with the drop dead date in maybe a certain number of years that would be being reasonable for the changeover. Any smoke detector outlives its usefulness in 10 years. So if we simply said that as a smoke detector outlives its usefulness, it has to be replaced with a newer type, that might be acceptable. But Fire Chief and I have already combined our efforts to suggest new terminology for one of our ordinances and then run it by the law director after his comment.
And I just wanted to make a comment about a previous discussion in our Committee of the Hole Meeting. We had representatives from University Hospital come in and speak to council. And just to put in perspective, University Hospital, our community hospital, in 2014, our firefighters transported to University Hospital 951 times, or 82% of all transports went to University Hospital Richmond. We transported a total of 1,163 times. So University Hospital Richmond truly is our community hospital. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Police Chief Newman? I mean, Roach? Police Chief Roach?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I just crossed you over.
For our police activity thus far in 2015 compared to the same period of time in 2014, where our Part 1 crimes are up 23%, the main reason for that is our larceny theft defenses are up 48%. The good news is our burglaries are down 83% compared to the same time last year. Other than that, most of our activity is pretty much the same as it was last year. There's just a few minor changes. Our CAD entries up to this point are at 8,481. That is the better, the most accurate figure for our total activity because it encompasses everything we do in addition to the calls for service, traffic enforcement, and et cetera. Our fines from Lynnhurst Court for the first quarter are up 29.6% from last year. Our overtime is up 5.9%. The cost for overtime paid and accumulated time paid is actually down 10% from the same period of time last year. The mall accounts for 5.3% of our calls for service and 15% of our total arrests. And the apartments are currently accounting for 19.5% of our calls for service. I did have a, attended a meeting last Friday at the Marriott Hotel in Warrensville Heights. Cleveland Police called the meeting to advise, kind of update the suburbs on the planning for the Republican National Convention when it comes into town. At this point, they're trying to do some, some background work, but the actual planning of the, the security and everything that goes along with that convention is really handled by the Secret Service. The main, the main people are the Secret Service, Homeland Security, FEMA, and the FBI. So they have not yet appointed a director for that planning commission. So until they do, there's not a lot of details that are, that are known. But Cleveland is anticipating, based on the experience from other cities, that they'll need between 2,000 and 3,000 more officers to supply the necessary, necessary security requirements. And there were representatives there from Detroit, Chicago, and Pittsburgh, so they will be drawing on some help from the big cities. Most of the people that will be affected in our area will be any communities that have hotels, because they'll probably all be booked. Interstates, if you have interstates, you could probably be impacted. We may see some impact with our airport, some feeling that that will be utilized a lot more during that week. But other than that, I don't know that our community will be affected too much more. I anticipate that they will be reaching out to our span, our regional network for our SWAT team and our bomb squad. But other than that, it's kind of too early to say. Once, they're supposed to have the Secret Service person in place. It's going to be in charge by the middle of June. So I think once he's here, I think we'll have a lot, a lot clearer idea of what is going to be necessary and how much the suburbs are going to be impacted. I do know that, that they've already reached out to a couple of the larger suburban agencies like Lakewood and Parma to see if they would have people available. But I don't know that a lot of the smaller agencies are really not going to be able to help out too much other than specialized units. But I just thought I'd give you, any of you who are wondering, I just thought I'd give you some idea that there is some talk at least going on and planning in very early stages. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Now that Macy's is closed, have we seen any shift in criminal activity up at the mall? Has there been a corresponding drop, or has the activity shifted from Macy's to other stores at the mall?
Actually, thefts have gone down from a shoplifting standpoint. Macy's was, their loss prevention was very aggressive, so they were always our biggest customer there from the shoplifting arrest standpoint. But I haven't seen an increase necessarily on any activity at Sears or Penny's, and some of the other thefts are related to the kiosk in the mall.
We will move to Building Commissioner Phil Sebo.
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, members of council and citizens. I just have a short report this evening. The, as I reported during the last meeting, our, a lot of our building department activity during the first part of the year has been centered around the major apartment complexes. And my assistant, Jim Urenker, and myself have been meeting personally with regional management rather than local management of the three major apartment projects on a regular basis over the last couple of months to address their, their major building maintenance concerns. I would like to report that Dorchester is the first to complete all of their major, all of the list of, of their major maintenance concern items of the lists that the building department gave them. And they've basically repaired all of their fire doors, all of their exit and emergency lighting, all of their corridor lighting. They've brought all of their major maintenance concerns into line with our ordinances. So I'm happy to report that Dorchester's probably in better condition now than it's been in a long time. We're meeting with regional management of Richmond Park on Thursday morning, people from both Detroit and Atlanta, to review their progress on their maintenance. So I'm, I'm reporting that we are happy so far with the response that we've been getting to our letters that we've been giving them on their, on their lack of maintenance over the last few years, and we're going to move ahead with that. On this Navalian Gleaton Sewer Project, the letters to the last 15, give or take, residents that had not taken care of their sewer problems went out about a week ago. We've already heard from two of the residents on that list of 15 who reported that they're moving ahead as quickly as possible with their, with hiring a contractor and with fixing their issues. So we haven't heard from the other 12 or 13 yet. We're hoping to hear from the, at least the major, the majority of them by the end of the month. So at least the early reports look good, and people have received the letters and, and they're acting accordingly. The grass, the bids on grass cutting prices from local contractors were sent out earlier this week to, to get pricing. Richmond Heights does have six local landscape contractors within its borders, and we invited all six of those contractors to give us pricing on cutting grass for our, our program. We haven't heard back from any of them yet. It's a little bit early, but by the next meeting, I hope to have feedback from all six of those contractors as to whether they're interested in taking part with us and have enough information to be able to choose at least a couple of them to take part in the program so that we will be ready with the, with the action of council tonight. We will be ready to act swiftly when the grass starts growing to handle all the issues with that. Last but not least, there is going to be a public hearing in Columbus at the offices of the Board of Building Standards this coming Friday, and I will be attending that public hearing representing the Northeast Ohio building officials. And the, the public hearing is addressing the issue of security hardware on the doors of our school buildings in Northeast Ohio. It would, it would seem that some of our local educators are taking upon themselves to react to the security concerns of their schools by locking their students in the building rather than achieving the opposite effect, which is to lock intruders out of the building. And, and while we are all concerned about the, the health and welfare of our students, we also want to be able to see those students get out of this, get out of the building in the case of an emergency such as a fire or some other type of emergency that would see they want to leave the building expeditiously. So we're going to have a hearing, and various interest groups have been invited to the hearings such as members of school boards, police and fire representatives, members of manufacturers of various specialty door hardware, and, and other types of interested parties. And I'll be able to report back on that possibly at the next meeting as to what was discussed. And that's my report for tonight.
Chief, a question. Isn't it against the law to, to lock the children into the school?
We've had several minor incidents, I would say. One of them occurred recently during one of our school, one of our snow days when the students were actually not in, not in session, but even though the students were not in session, daycare session, daycare students were in session because the parents still had to go to work. And on that particular day, doors that were chained shut as a general rule in order to keep intruders out at night were not opened in the morning because whoever was responsible for opening them didn't think the students were going to be there that day. But the buildings were in fact occupied by daycare students. We're seeing that in other areas of the state, similar incidents are happening whereby bars, different types of bars and, and other jury-rigged hardware, if I might use that term, is being used to secure doors. And while it doesn't necessarily lock the students in like a chain would, students still are not able to figure this stuff out expeditiously enough to be able to exit the building swiftly in the case of a fire. And the Cleveland area did in fact have the state's worst fire death toll in the history of Ohio's schools fire, so we don't want to obviously see that happen again. So we're going to hear testimony about what various interest groups feel is the best way to handle this. And it's a tough subject because you can't lock the students out of the building, and the students are part of the problem. The shooters, in many cases, have been students. So it's a, it's a tough issue. It's a very emotional issue, and we're going to listen to the testimony to see what people have to offer on Friday.
Interesting.
I believe, you know, Bill has just become the president of the same...
Vice President this year, but of the, of the Ohio Building Officials Association again for the second time.
Interesting. Finance Director Mitch Mahalit.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council and residents. Three items tonight, and as the mayor mentioned briefly in the Committee of the Hole Meeting, I regret to inform everybody that Georgette Hodge, our county payable clerk, left employee with the city. Her last day was Monday, the 6th. I'd been working diligently with the Chair of the Search Committee to identify candidates to get a replacement as soon as possible. When Georgette was hired, she was sort of a byproduct or a discovery of the identifying the payroll clerk. It was part of that search, and we were lucky enough to identify her at the time. We also had identified some other candidates and reached out to them. Unfortunately, they had found other opportunities, so we're casting out the net again. I believe that since, as part of this search, we are, I've gone over the job descriptions. I've given, given that information to the Search Committee. They are looking at posting for the job this week. And actually, word gets around fast. I mean, I've already received some informal interest in, in the position, so it is my hope that we should be able to go through the process and fill the position fairly quickly. And I will keep you posted on that. Second item is, I don't know if you've been in the building, you may have noticed the state auditors are no longer on the premises for the time being. Their last day on site was April 2nd. They had gone through the data for the 2013 portion of the audit. It actually has gone very smoothly thus far. They have a very good working relationship, we're getting the information that they need, answering the questions that they have, dealing with their concerns. I'm not sure what the timeframe is for them to be back. I presume they'll probably be gone for a few weeks to a month, and then they'll come back and start with the 2014 portion of the audit. Last item on the list is the, an update on the fixed asset project. In terms of the data collection, we're reaching the home stretch, I would say. Late last week, ZUPCA, who is doing the fixed asset, putting together the data for us, they did essentially what I would call a peer review, where they brought in a representative from the firm who was not a part of the project to sort of do a quality control test to make sure that they had, they had taken a certain sample and make sure that the equipment was where it was supposed to be, that sort of thing. So they were going through the departments. Paul was working with them on that. They visited with the fire department, the police department, service department in particular. I'd like to thank all the department heads for their cooperation because it went very smoothly. I had a discussion with the project lead, Steve Lanza, late last week. I'm hoping that we can get to the point that within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to sort of close the loop and get the data integrated into the system. I'm trying to pin them down on a date. I know they still have a few things to do in terms of the database, but when they get that done, I think we should be able to wrap that up and, and get one of the items that's been sort of a lingering item on our audit, and many other cities for that matter, off the list. So I will keep you posted on that as that progresses. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Service Department Director Donald Kornisky.
Thank you, Madam President and council. Others turning up nicer already, and we're out there in the parks. We're cleaning up, we're giving the restrooms... out there in the parks. We're cleaning up. We're giving the restrooms put back together, water turned on, the pool is getting put back together. We're already landscaping around City Hall, Fire Department, Police Department this week. It's been, oh, moving fast. An interesting thing that happened when I came up to City Hall the other day, I found three of my guys at the corner tree over there, kind of looking at the tree, trying to decide how to trim it. And all three, the guys were the gentlemen that we sent to classes not too long ago. So they were doing their overview on the tree. And then at break time today, we were talking about the Arbor Day tree that we're going to get for Arbor Day coming up. And as we were talking, the one gentleman that we sent a three-day class to Elmeratum, which covered everything from ground preparation, planting, stabilizing, trimming, and everything from life to death of the tree, one of the things he said right away was, are you going to prep the ground ahead of time before you dig the, you know, put the tree in? So he's already using what he learned to make sure that when we put that tree in the ground, it's going to, it's going to be stabilized and ready to grow. So it was, it was nice to see that they just didn't go there and not do anything. They came back and they remembered what they were saying in classes. That's exactly what I was hoping would happen. Our baseball fields are getting prepped as well. And I will also be meeting with Mr. Courtney tomorrow and going over some of the road projects that we want to pick up in 2015.
Great, thank you. City Engineer Lee Courtney.
Just one item, Madam President. Following up on road projects, I attended the Highway Department's open house last week and learned that the resurfacing of Richmond Road is still scheduled for 2019. And that's fiscal 2019, so it begins July 1st of 18. So that gets it six months closer.
You couldn't do anything to convince them to like bring the schedule in?
They pretty much moved at their own pace.
2018. You know how young they'll be in 2018? Thank you for the report. Economic Development Director Crystal Bess.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, members of council and community. I just have a couple of items tonight, just to reiterate what the mayor said as far as our having received the $100,000 demolition fund grant. This is going to be very useful in our work on the gas station, going back to the gas station. $80,000 of that will be used for demolition and soil removal at the gas station. And we're used, we'll use those funds in conjunction with the $200,000 grant. And so the $200,000 grant, as you know, is the remediation grant. We have the remediation grant and demolition grant. What that means hopefully is that the city will have most of this work done without, without spending very much money, very much of the city's money. We're still working on that. But it, we are now aware that some of the demolition fund money can be used towards a mass obligation on the ground feeling. So that hopefully will, will set the cost of this overall project. And so I will keep you posted with our back. The other two things.
Just a quick question on that. If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. When do we anticipate the actual physical demolition of these properties? I know I heard spring, I heard summer, I've heard fall. Do we have any, are we any closer to knowing when we can actually see a piece of equipment there and start doing the job?
Actually, we just recently got a report back from the asbestos contractor. They looked at it and they said, this looks like there's a lot of asbestos. The outstanding question now is about the, the underground storage tank and whether we have to use the old rules for mediating those underground storage tanks or the new rules. If it's the old rules, I believe that we're still looking at a summer demolition because the old rules are a little more favorable. If we have to use the new rules that were enacted in 2012, we're having, we're going to have to get back to you and let you know exactly because if those, those rules are a little more onerous. And so that's the question, but we, we're, we may ever...
But is there a time schedule that, that this program will, will stop or this project will, will end?
From the time that we actually get authorization to go ahead and do the remediation with demolition, it shouldn't take more than about a month to the time we actually go forward and do demolition, to the time that everything is raised and down. And from there, we have to put in the, the grass and the new sidewalk and the curb cuts. So that'll take probably another few weeks. I understand the question that you're asking. I don't have a concrete answer for you, but because of...
I mean, will it, do you think it will happen this year?
Yes.
I guess that's pretty good.
This is a grand, just adding some landscaping.
Yes.
Not the brown fund grant, but the demolition fund grant. What do you want? Do they mean what, just grass?
Well, actually, our building commissioner received a call about what we wanted there. And maybe you could speak to that a little bit better.
Counselwoman, it, it will be basically grass because if we do, since this property is right on the corner, bushes and, and that type of thing would, would tend to block line of sight. And also, we don't want to put something in there that's going to be onerous, to use Crystal's terminology, in maintaining. So it'll, it'll be basically grass. You know, whether there's some small shrubbery or whatnot remains to be seen, but...
Well, that shrubbery that's, that's there now. There is a little, little bit on the corner.
Yeah, that'll all go.
They're going to have to take all that out.
Everything's going.
Because they're going to have to take all that soil out in place that you're cleaning for. So that means any, any, the vegetation there will have to come out.
I, I think our general plan though is to have some mowing and some flower beds and something other than just flat grass.
Double D on them, huh?
Uh, no, that, that can be part. There's a, there's a, there's a few thousand dollars that's in there that, that can be used for minimal, other than just black grass kind of thing. Hopefully we can make it wildflowers and mounds or something.
We do want to, we do want to raise the grade at least enough to make the site drain into the street properly. Because right now, it, the street drains into the site and the site holds water. And we want to prevent that from happening again. So we're going to, I'm sure that the grant will permit the site to be raised somewhat along with Mr. Courtney's recommendations as to far as what the site should be built up to in order to see it drain properly and to look, make it look proper also.
Crystal, you've, you've been, you've got a really good insight, Mr. Courtney and Mr. Seville. Absolutely. But it comes down to what you want to see on the, what's the building that's down, what you'd like to see on the site. Ask me if you have anything to do. Okay. Just really quickly, a couple of other things. The mayor and I have a really good meeting with Phil Maiden, CFO at Constable Aviation, trying to find out what they're doing and what their plans are for growth in this, in this community of Richmond Heights. Really an interesting business that we have. They've done a lot of updating and it looks like they are here to stay. And so we, we sort of fostered that relationship and we continue building the relationship with the, with the companies over there at the airport. So that was really productive. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, I have reached out to South Peabody because they have a community development corporation. Richmond Heights does not have a community development corporation. And that's important because there are certain federal grants that we might be able to go after, but for the fact that we don't have a CVC in Richmond Heights. And so my thought was, if we could do some collaborating with South, South Peabody and their community development corporation called One South Peabody, we can make ourselves eligible for some federal dollars for things like economic development, bonus fees and dollars, training for young people who maybe are graduating high school or wanting to do degrees. In particular, we were looking at a, at a grant through the Department of Jobs and Family Services that is a maximum of $800,000. I don't know that we're actually going to be able to pull together all the information to go after that grant at this point because it's going to be, it's going to force. But now we have started the relationship and we absolutely will work with them, look into what other grants might be available in summer or in fall if we can go after and capitalize on, on these funds. So I think that's all I have.
Pardon me. You mentioned that they have a community development. What is that? Have they had a corporation?
Community Development Corporation.
Thank you.
And I don't, I don't know if I don't involve the CVC because we just have a community development corporation, but we don't have one right now. And grants, a lot of times they wouldn't see if there's mutual cooperation. It's just things that makes them collaborate with them and go after some of this money.
Thank you very much.
We had some conversation about trying to get South Peabody involved, to get them off with the CVC and organization that we worked with us together.
I think that's an excellent idea. And I absolutely will approach, approach them about it. We will, we will meet with South Peabody and the CVC, probably be there next week, to talk about grant opportunities and, and definitely one of the things that we need to discuss is how we can collaborate through kicking off a lot of the...
Especially since it's kind of this, there are schools.
Right, right.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, I've actually floated the discussion or initiated it. So we'll proceed, we'll proceed a little bit more. Yeah, I've had some initial discussions with the mayor itself.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. We'll move to the audience. Are there any comments? Okay. And we will go to our boardroom and we have none. And then Newberry.
Ordinance 27, 2015, introduced by Lenteen, first reading. An ordinance, many chapter 143, Division of Fire, to add new section, 143, 10, to set a maximum age for, she set an age limit for the original position of entry level fire player or new player in the region.
Comments, Mr. Lenteen?
Just briefly, and then I'll, I would like to have the chief also comment on it. Pretty much everything is in the title. We're going to, if this ordinance is passed this evening, it would help us out to deal with age discrimination. It is, it is a law that we need to have in place. This is going to mirror other communities in the state with the age. The ages have to be at least 18 years old and no older than 40, almost 41, 40, your 41st birthday, to be able to be employed in the Fire Department. With that being said, I would like to turn it over to the chief to speak to it.
You meant to add entry level position, you said.
That's exactly what I meant. Yes, because if, if there is, obviously we have, we have employees in the Fire Department that are older than 41 years old. And that doesn't mean that we're going to get rid of those guys or ladies. This is the, the new people come in. But chief, if you would?
That's exactly it, Councilman Lenteen. Thank you. Basically, what we'll be doing is our ordinance will be in compliance with, with the state revised code. And it is for entry level positions where at time of appointment, the individual needs to be at least 18 years of age and not have gotten to their 41st birthday. So it's 18 to 40. And this will also bring us in line with our regional partners in the area who have some of the language adopted.
This has not gone through committee, but it was the consensus in our committee at the whole this evening for passage. And it is my recommendation for passage. And I would like to make the motion to pass ordinance number 27 dash 2015.
Do you want to move for suspension?
Suspension, yes.
Second. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Resolution 29, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 40, 2015, introduced by Alexander, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter, to accept the grant funds from the Caihoga County Demolition Fund and Decaring Emergency.
Comments, Mayor?
Yes, we were awarded the $100,000 grant last Friday and this legislation allows us to accept money.
Lewis?
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Resolutions 30, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 31, 2015, introduced by Alexander, first reading. A resolution containing the recommendation planning commission with a conditional use permit for indoor entertainment facilities and a B1 local business district that can provide access to Charford.
Comments, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, this is confirming the recommendations of the planning commission, which unanimously approved this, this use for the, on Charford Road. And move for suspension.
Second. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Alcindor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Resolutions 31, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 42, 2015, introduced by Alexander, first reading. Resolution number 32, 2015, introduced by Alexander first reading. A resolution expressing the intent of the city of Richmond Heights in 2015 to sell by internet auction, personal property, referenced in Ohio Device Code 721.15, which is no longer needed for public use for obsolete or unsecured use, which it was required in 2015.
Comments, Mr. Alexander?
As I mentioned in the previous meeting, our service director's cleaning house down there and getting rid of all the unwanted stuff that has kind of collected, and this is the legislation that will help him get that, part of that done. Move for suspension.
Second in motion.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Resolution 30 to 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 33, 2015, introduced by Mayor Roach first reading. A resolution authorizing the extension of our agreement with Paul Ellis to provide assistance for the new finance department.
Comments? Mayor?
Yes, Paul has done an excellent job in the last few months, and we need his expertise for a little while longer, so this is, will give us the opportunity to do that. I'd.
Move for suspension. Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Resolution 33, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 34, 2015, introduced by Alexander first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city to agree with South CEOs dot com incorporated for disposal of unneeded obsolete and unused equipment.
Comments, Mr. Alexander?
This is kind of the second piece to the previous legislation to dispose of the unwanted equipment, I'll also have Don comment on this.
This is a work that's been used for several years to, you know, to bestow improvements on the kind of vehicles that have, that have, that have, that have, that have, that have a lot of supply notes, and, 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 and,